Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting to order. And first order of business will be to approve our minutes from our last meeting. If you can get a motion to do so.
I'm moved we approved the minutes from the December meeting.
Second, second, Bruce. Any changes we'd like to make? All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
We have Kyle Katz here from the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission to discuss some of the changes we made to our zoning ordinance. I am going to remind Kyle that this is the Plymouth zoning ordinance. It's not Two Rivers. So, we spent a lot of time in coming up with some of the changes. So, please bear that in mind. And I really, we've gone through just about everything. I think there was a big question we had of the river corridor and can you refresh my memory?
It's the flood part of the ordinance.
Yep.
River corridors and the flood hazard overlay.
Flood hazard protection overlay and the river corridor.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I know that's something that we need to clarify in a few groups. Starting on that.
Yeah, first of all, thank you all for inviting me to the meeting. My name is Kyle Katz, Planer at Two Rivers, I teach Regional Commission. And I mainly focus on the flood hazard portions of the bylaw. So, that's what we'll look at this evening. And essentially, the Plymouth bylaw has adopted the river corridor waters and the flood hazard areas. Now, the flood hazard areas are FEMA requirement to be part of the National Insurance Program. River corridors are Vermont Agency of Natural Resources' provision for towns to get more de-ramp, essentially after a federal disaster. And so, this bylaw essentially encompasses the natural river corridor area and applies the flood hazard area regulations to the natural river corridors. And there kind of one little wrinkle in that is that the 50-foot buffers on watersheds that are greater than half an acre were never adopted in 2013. And so, that's something that when the Agency of Natural Resources reviews the bylaw for compliance with the river corridors, they're going to call out. And so, incorporating language on a 50-foot buffer, they mentioned is a requirement for keeping that river corridor status. So, that's where I added that language in here in section 2.4.2. So, that essentially irons out that wrinkle that river corridors, it wasn't addressed back when the bylaw was adopted in 2013.
Does it make sense to have an arbitrary width of 50 feet, not taking into account change of elevation? Because if the elevation is flat, it could extend out 200 feet. If the banks come up straight, you could have high and dry land within 50 feet. Is there any way to take that into account?
It's, my understanding is from top of bank. So, it would depend on where you measure that top of bank from. But, yeah, I mean, I'm not the one who developed the river corridor bylaws, so I'm not necessarily...
No, but I mean, we have to implement that into our bylaws.
Yeah.
And it seems to me you could be penalizing some people and not covering other people.
Perfect example being in Greece flats. That's, I mean, the water is the same height as the flats.
Right. But 50 feet would get you across Route 100. I mean, 50 feet doesn't get you across Route 100.
Right, right.
And there are a lot of these other mountain streams that come down perpendicular to 100 that 50 feet gets you 50 feet higher, 30 feet higher in elevation. So, it seems to me, I don't know what the answer is, but it just seems to me like you're not really covering the affected areas.
Yeah, I mean, this is more so the flood hazard regulations really just cover telepathy. So, that's, I think, where, you know, if you go up 30 feet, there's not an issue of being above the floodwater. But river corridors tend to, those are built around erosion. And so, the idea being that, you know, you might be 30, 40 feet above a stream, but if that bank starts to erode over time, then it could put a structure at risk.
So, the top of the bank could be 50, 60 feet higher than the actual river. A cut such as, say, Money Brook coming down to 100. So, you're going to measure the 50 feet from up at the very top going across, correct?
From top of bank, yeah.
From top of the bank, even though it's 60, 75 feet up above the actual...
With the idea being that, you know, you put a hazard right at that edge of that bank and you get a heavy rain two, three days, you get a lot of water running and undercuts that thing and that hazard's happening.
But just to be clear, it's not the edge of the river, but rather wherever the top of the bank may be.
Well, and that's from there back. That's where I think the zoning administrator wants to, if there's a question around that, you know, if it's a really steep bank and it goes 50 feet up, then that's something where the zoning administrator might reach out to state local managers just to clarify and say, you know, are we measuring from the top of this extremely steep slope? Is that where we're looking, the top of bank? Or is it, is there another indicator closer to the stream edge?
So, there is room for interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, and but with the river corridors, you know, I, as an administrator, if it was unclear, I would just reach out to the state local managers and say, hey, you know, can you clarify, this is the situation, this is what we're looking for, and it provides some guidance on that.
This is, this seems way too subjective. And you're going to get so many different rulings from different people. Because you could have one administrator say this, then another one comes in and says that. I think this needs to be much more tight, objective, because that 50, this makes no sense to me at all. And I'm going to give you a good reason. You know, I own the country store down there. The Black River runs right behind it. So, you're telling me 50 feet from that river into my property is going to be considered flood overnight now? And I can't do much with that then?
Think you're already in it.
No, not.
Just close to it, right next to it.
The garage is it. But none of the property, it's something...
Isn't the map river corridor?
I don't know, but this...
Because it may, it may already be in the floods area.
It's mapped, this is where they're not mapped.
Yeah.
This part of it that is, but what I'm worried about still, you know, because some of this bank, it drops a good 10, 12 feet till you get down to it. And those banks aren't ever going to erode. If not anything else, it's going to just gouge deeper, you know? Because even with all the rain we had in June, I didn't see, it didn't crash or anything. It wasn't a big deal. It just dug deeper. So, the river's now much, it dug another two or three feet down. That did happen. What I'm concerned about now is even all up and down the Black River there. This is, this is, what you're saying, it makes me very, extremely worried. And I can, I'll use the same example as like state fire marshals and how they interpret regulations. You got one fire marshal say this, another one comes in and does a completely one-eighth because they're interpreting regulations differently. I think what's going to happen at the state level is they need to nail these things down so that they're rock solid and no interpretation whatsoever. Because that's a big problem in this state, is giving the power to these people to make these decisions without having a real black and white guideline. And that is not...
But what that's trying to deal with, this stuff, it's not mapped already. So, you gotta, yes, it is.
Interpretation.
But how else are you gonna...
50 feet from the road, bank, or 50 feet above the water level, 25 feet or...
But what are they going to measure the water level? Are they going to measure during the high tide or what? Are they going to measure during a dry season?
It doesn't say anything about water level there. It's 50 feet from the top of the stream bank or slower.
Which has got to do with the water level.
But the water level is going to define where your bank is. Right now, you look at the...
But you said 20 feet.
You look at the... The drop, right? Look at the water level now or after a flood event and say it's a foot higher. No matter what, there are banks on either side of the river. At the top of that bank, you measure your 50 feet, not from...
Top of bank, right?
It's going to make a big difference though, because you go down the body of water.
Yeah. Well, in a different area, that's true, depending on where the bank is. But you're still measuring from the bank, not the water.
Vertical point along a stream bank when up there, change of slope is out of... Then... This is the definition that's in here.
I got it. I'm big on rules and regulations, but I like rules and regulations that are black and white.
Well, that's pretty black and white, but it's right there.
For steep valleys now would generally be, generally be the set. Just in my opinion, it's...
Problem is, streams don't pay attention to black and white.
They don't, and they change.
So, the bank will move, it's not a static system. Streams are riverbanks, they meander differently over time, they change the location, so you can't, there's no part of that place to say, this is where that top of bank is. You just have to make it an actual form.
You're what, basically, you're looking at a 50-foot setback, a 50-foot setback from a river.
Top of the bank.
From the top of the bank.
On watersheds greater than, uh, square mile.
So, if it's less than that...
If it's my pond, it wouldn't count. That's really the thing.
I don't know, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Simply reminded of, I believe it's a hock house, just after Frog City Road on the right-hand side.
Oh, that red, yes, I've been thinking about that too.
That's not the only one in town that I can think of that's...
Irene just practically left it ready to hang over the edge, even though it's higher than the ceiling of this place. Is it brown, yeah?
When you think of the bank, the slope of the bank, right?
They're right at the top of the bank now.
They're on the top of the bank, yeah. They're in it.
So, how much, how much property do we think in the town of Plymouth this type of thing's going to affect?
How about what?
How much, what, how many pieces of property will this new 50-feet requirement affect?
Wherever there's a river.
There's not a mapped river corridor.
And the watershed size has to meet that requirement of...
Greater than a half a square mile.
Greater than a square mile.
How many, how many spots in town is that the case? Um, you can...
Probably not many.
We'll get the...
Well, it becomes everybody on 100.
Yeah, so that's a mapped river corridor.
This is a new requirement, mapped.
This is where it's not mapped, that's what you decide. Where it is mapped, you've already got a map record, yeah. I just looked at it.
I don't think so.
Elaine will give you.
The Wi-Fi.
He needs the internet.
I was just going to look at it.
I looked at it before I came.
Yeah.
I have it. I'm connected to God.
But we, we don't have this in our zoning plan right now. That's what we're trying to add, right?
We're actually integrating, we have, we have that 50-foot setback from the stream. We're trying to integrate it into the flood hazard overlay and, and the stream...
Is that a state requirement?
Yeah, it is, right? 50 feet?
There you go.
Uh, for the river corridors.
Yeah.
If you don't want river corridors, it's, you don't have to have them. But they do help with disaster funding, so...
Because we had, part of our ordinance did cover river corridors, it increased our...
And that we could get back from, yeah.
It increased our expanded community for flood hazard engagements.
That was 80, 80-something versus other towns.
Seven and a half percent if you get additional funding, so...
That's a good reason. Yes, 17.5 percent.
So, if there's a $500,000 disaster, $100,000 disaster.
It's significant.
Okay, so it looks like the buffers, and this is not, this is just showing where those buffers are, but you can work around on the map and see that the buffers of these darker yellow lines that go off.
That does, yeah.
Yeah. So, they go up here, go up here, and then this lighter shade is the map river corridor. Next, it's wider. That runs all along down here.
That's the Black River?
Yep.
And there must be Money Brook coming up.
Now, will that affect someone building on the edge of a stream will be required to get a conditional use, was that?
If you're within the 50 feet.
Yeah, if you're outside of the...
And we already...
You're outside of the flood zone or the river corridor area, so...
If you're outside of it.
Yeah.
But if you're in it...
If you're in it, then no new structures are allowed, period, in the current bylaw.
Okay. That's easy, though.
Or we get variance, or we consult with the river coordinator, the A&amp;I river court engineer to determine the actual 50-foot mark.
Yeah, if you have a, if there's a, like, an existing lot and the topography is such where it's just impossible to build anyway, then yeah, variance would probably be an option. But generally, you know, 50 feet is not that wide. Most lots are, you know, one acre, two acre lot, those are small, but you're probably going to find, be able to find a location outside that 50-foot buffer.
It would be to the homeowner's benefit to get outside of that 50-foot.
Absolutely. They might get flood insurance.
Well, there's that. They could get away.
Well, and you know your risk if someone builds close to it 20, 30 years down the road, the river starts encouraging erosion closer, then you could have buyout issue, which... I don't know, wait. So, yeah, this is, the river corridor map is all online, it's on the Vermont Natural Resources Atlas, and you can zoom in to different areas in the tab. If you get close enough, it shows the parcel boundaries. So, yeah, here you can see the...
That's my house here.
Is that Money Brook on the left? Do you think Mike has that?
It is, yes.
Right here.
Yeah, okay.
And see, these are, these are massive parcels going out. You know, you're not really taxing someone too hard, so there should be plenty of locations for, for development. But yeah, this is something that...
Well, that's sand, there isn't that much sand.
A lot of this, I think a lot of this map, I was looking at it earlier, has to have been done in the fall when there's not color, because there is a lot of brown stuff.
I know, there's too much sand since that last week's storm.
Yeah.
The sand, I just covered it up. I have a lot of sand there.
So, you can see, especially down here, there's some significant overlap between the map river corridor, which is that light yellow...
That's mine.
The red, which is the flood hazard.
That's my property, just pointed it.
Where, oh, really?
We just pointed it, yeah. Very based on FEMA's...
That's the FEMA flood map.
History of flooding.
It's low elevation. My house is on that.
Yeah, so...
Or is your actual elevation.
They based, based most of theirs on elevation and they use the histories. However, it was never revised after Irene and according to some people that you talk to, you probably see more of it, FEMA will be readdressing all our river corridors and our overlays.
Yeah, well, FEMA is just looking at the, the flood hazard areas, so they're not looking at the river corridors so much. But they're publishing new maps that will be automatically adopted in the bylaw, because that's how much the bylaws are generally written, is they automatically adopt the most recent flood map used by FEMA. Those new maps will be coming out, I believe, in 2026 or 2027. And, you know, they're, they're based on newer data, fly door, more fine-grained mapping software. So, there will be some differences from the current map that, that's published. Because the old maps were, I think, 1970s and 80s, maybe, or there's something out. So, a lot's changed. We'll go back. And then, just on top of everything, I know that in your work with some of the other parts of the bylaw, you're looking at buffer areas, and I think there's just a general 30-foot, you're considering a general 30-foot buffer off of all streams for the entire town, is my, my understanding. And so, if we're just looking at adding additional 20 feet buffer from the bank towards this areas over here and passes their mile, it's not a huge change from, from what's being considered already. And then, let's see, the second section. This section, so now we are in, and I'm hopping around, looking at the flood hazard.
That's just going to confuse you?
No. We're in section 2.11, flood hazard protection overlay, that's on...
15.
15. And I've just added standard exemptions. These are just exemptions across the place, the state has already exempted them from local zoning, but it would make it easier for the zoning administrator to see those exemptions instead of have to try and report it in state law somewhere.
So, part C.
So, A and B is something that you're adding here?
That's new.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, A and B, these are just some generally standard exemptions, like you don't want, if you have to just use general code names, that's pretty, you'd be a pervert for that.
That actually should be in the things that don't require a permit.
Yeah, these are all exemptions.
Those that follow activities do not require the permit.
Yeah.
The wording doesn't seem clear here. It's still, A, as long as the ground elevation's under and adjacent, what does "under" of the structure mean?
Under the structure.
If there's a basement, are we, you're talking about, the "under" doesn't seem to make, that seems unclear. So, you want to fill in, I assume that's what it means to fill in.
I think that's, I think that that is brought up.
If you, if you fill the basement up to the level of the adjacent soil, you're not really changing anything.
No.
That seems like what you want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just didn't seem clear, that's all.
I think that that's actually mentioned further down. I'm just going to see ahead, go back. Let's see what, take the...
And the certificate of compliance with the state building permit, that doesn't belong in flood hazard overlay. It belongs in all of them.
Where are you looking?
So, I think, and actually, I wrote in page, I jumped down a little more, I wish it were all in one place, but it's not. So, page 25, I had added a section, but I think I'll do, so 3.6, 0.8, 0.21. This is actually covered for the most part, and...
There's 24.
There's a fellow who's just...
Page 24.
Oh, okay.
Right here on 3.6, 0.8, 0.17. So, so when I cross it out, down here, this is redundant essentially, but it says, except for the need to fill, it says to degrade or mitigate.
It seems like it should be up in that paragraph up above.
So, we can, yeah, we can move this, to, we can move that to exemptions. Okay, so, yeah, we can look at making that change.
Who put that crap in there?
What is that?
We, we didn't have that in the previous ones.
Which page did you want?
The page 50.
Yeah.
Do not require a permit. That should be in the first section, what requires a permit or not. It's got nothing to do with the flood hazard overlay. Doesn't belong there. We'll move it.
I'm not sure.
Right to the beginning. Right, it's section one. Says things that don't need permit.
Well, it says specifically that they don't require a permit under this particular section of the bylaw. How are you going to take all that then, move it to another area instead of towards that section?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I think part of it is the exemptions in the other section of the bylaw may be broader than what would be allowed in a flood hazard area. So, you might have exemptions for other things that you couldn't exempt in the flood hazard areas. So, by having this in here and saying specifically in the flood hazard area, these are exemptions.
Yeah.
But more broadly, in the entire bylaw, you might have all of these plus ten other items that are, are exempt. Here, you know, it could be integrated with the general exemptions, but then you need to specify... Here, you know, it could be integrated with the general exemptions, but then you need to specify each time applying also the flood hazard overlay.
You'd have to be referencing two dot one-one.
So it could be either way, you, you could, you just have to be very clear between these and the general exemptions. That all of these apply in the flood hazard overlay.
I think it, personally, it makes sense having it right there.
I agree.
Otherwise, you could read the flood hazard protection overlay and completely unaware that there are uh, things that don't require a permit. Why would you even think to go back and look in another place to see? So having it right there eliminates a lot of confusion.
All right, and yeah, most of these are just general state exemptions, they, they require permitting at the state level, so. I was unclear on two point one one, twenty-six addition of over or under fifty square feet shall require some permit.
Uh, seven, two, one, one, six?
Two, one, one, six, the five sixteen. So for the most part, any, any additions to principal structures in flood zone requires a permit. If it's an accessory structure.
Yeah, that's why it was deleted.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be deleted.
Yep. That is in the flood hazard section, yes, that's taken out. All right. I think we're at the last. Yeah, the general conditions and these standards. Um, so this text here is just procedural, uh, for, this is on page.
Before you go down, can you go back up a little bit?
Yeah.
To the.
Page twenty-two.
Three, six, one. Keep going.
Yep.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah. Yeah, so three point six, point two. Um, this is just procedural, you might be able to comment to act from A and R before you hold the hearing. So you don't want to hold the hearing prior to the end of the thirty day window that, that they have to respond because that can invalidate a permit.
And he said before.
Yeah.
Getting only.
Yeah.
Further down the page at three point six, point four, point three, on page twenty-two. The applicant shall provide a project review sheet within, with the zoning permit application. Quite often we get from A and R that a project review sheet isn't necessary, but all we're looking for is something in writing. So that was a good way to, three point six one, change the text, the applicant shall provide a project review sheet with the zoning permit application.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that how we got it written?
Yeah, that's how it's written, this has been.
Yep.
Okay. And then this is just text clarification, like, you don't need to say A zones.
A need zone, yep. Elevated at least two feet over the bud.
Yeah.
Base flood hazard area.
Yeah, so.
It's two feet, right?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, you're going from one, we currently get one foot.
Should go five feet.
But then two feet, two feet is the common standard now. When you're at base flood elevation, that's measured to the top of the roof's floor. So that's literally your doorstep. Uh, so it doesn't give you much room for error. Uh, but if you go, you know, one foot's fine, two feet is better and, and it, it helps with um, flood insurance premiums as well if you're higher up. Uh, so that's good for homeowners. That is if they improve the home elevated, there's new homes currently are not, not permitted in the flood hazard areas and for the current ordinance, so.
If we go onto page twenty-five, on the section three point six, point eight, point two-two. Subdivisions in PUDs shall be accessible by dry land access. So that means no ferry boats, no, is that what that means, what does it mean?
That, that is, I don't think this would apply often. But if you happen to have. So like, there's nothing prohibiting someone from building a road in a flood area or a driveway. Um, if you have development that requires a new access that goes through a flood zone, that access has to be higher than um.
Two feet.
Or it has to be accessible essentially during a flood. Like you can't get cut off from, uh, from emergency access.
Does that mean you're not allowing bridges somewhere?
No, I'm just saying like you, you can't build a road that is going to get flooded and then you're stuck and people can't reach you.
I hope not, yeah.
So you say, you say it shall be accessible by dry land access, does a bridge count as a dry land?
Sure, cause you're dry land on both sides.
It would, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, if, if.
It's dry.
It's dry.
Hopefully.
Yeah, it's just saying you can't like.
If it survives the storm.
If, if there's a good place to put the driveway or a road that's, that's higher up and is not going to get inundated when there's a flood, do that versus putting it through the flood zone where it might get flooded and yourself. Uh, I don't think this is going to, this would apply frequently because the current ordinance doesn't allow new development in the flood zone. The only instance is if you have a house and they won't put their access, their driveway.
Through there.
Through there, yeah.
Good example, example of scout camp road and buildings route. There's a couple of spots down there that literally the driveway is.
But on the other hand, driveways wash out with those floods.
Yeah, and we don't care about driveways, it's roads.
Oh, roads, roads will wash out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this would only apply in the, the flood zone, so it's not applicable in higher elevation.
Right.
Um, and I mean, that's, that's optional. Doesn't need to.
I would hope somebody would build a road up there. I hope somebody would build a road up there.
Is meant to avoid development. I think that's a problem. Thinking, we kind of went over page twenty-four. Um, this one just had, has um, some minor changes in text. Um, three point six, point eight, point one-three, existing buildings substantially improved, shovel lowest floor, including basement elevated to at least two feet above the base flood level. And then this is documented, proposed as a condition of the elevation certificate. Um, and then point four, just below that, that's just standard required language.
That's group.
It's, it's only required if you have an A ozone, permit doesn't have one, but new maps are coming out and if they create, if the new map shows an A ozone, you want to have this language in here. So, um, just to add. And then three point six, point eight, point four, I'm pretty sure it's already just covered in the general standards for development. Um, like, you don't need to distinguish manufacturer companies as being different from other residential buildings. It's all just principal structures, so. Um, this, I'm pretty sure this language is not, not necessary. Um, and then I think just a couple of definitional changes. Hold on, there's one other item.
There is one item on page twenty-eight. Section three point one-two, extraction of gravel, sand, and minerals. And I thought we put in here the extraction or stockpiling of sand, soil, earth, and materials for substantial change in operation, including removal or transport of a thousand or more cubic yards of material.
Yeah, I did add that too. Cause I remember when you had said.
Extraction or stockpiling.
Extraction or stockpile.
Then you wanna change the heading in three point one-two.
Extraction or stockpile, yes, you can do that.
Yeah.
That'd be a good, good idea.
End order.
End order. Then it covers everything.
Yeah.
Earth and materials too should be in there. Which is stumps, which could be stumps, wood, comes from the earth.
Including.
That's good.
There you go. Perhaps. Why is in any given year crossed out?
Cause.
Because you get to a thousand this year, a thousand next year.
Pretty soon you'll be gone, no. It's, it's just.
It's like.
You've only got one shot ahead. That's partly because it's not sixty yards, it's a thousand, so if it's sixty yards in any given year would make some sense.
Oh, here it was, so this, I, I just mentioned this earlier. Um, this section here is already mentioned. I, I missed it.
Is that three sixteen?
Three point six, point eight, point two-one. Um, it's written in different wording on the bottom of page twenty-four, three point six, point eight, point one-seven.
Yeah, that's fine.
So it's just.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, adding that, you know, except is needed to go exist in base. I think somewhere to incorporate that with the exemptions. Um, and then, and then the definition, so we're almost there. So I've added a definition for common land development. That's where a structure is provisioned or constructed under one or two plan or permit, setting different stages, phases, or in combination with other construction activities. So for the, and they may take place at different times on different schedules.
Okay.
No, this is for, um, so this is for the substantial improvement definition, which is where the bottom here.
That's pretty standard boilerplate, in Boston, you can tell us it's a third, a third, a third. Third, the value, third, the size, and within three years, we don't care how Boston does. This is just civilized down there.
Yeah, so I, that, I added that.
But the fifty percent is fine, that's over two years.
Link together.
Uh, I will say it's infinitely easier to do things in Massachusetts, so it's. Yeah, essentially.
And that's saying a lot, so.
If someone wants major improvement on structure in the flood zone, they can't do it piece by piece over time if it's all one project to get around a permit.
Right.
Uh, there's theory to it. You could add on a hundred square feet year after year and eventually you double or triple the value of your house and you haven't needed to improve it to the flood requirements, so it's.
Yeah, I like the, I like the fifty percent, that's. They'll, they'll solve that problem.
Yeah. Um, and that's it for the flood stuff.
Um, I went to page twenty-seven. Top, three point ten-seven.
Okay.
Did we strike that out?
Yeah, I did. Um, what was the, I guess.
I, I don't know what the reason was.
Overputting it in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was to allow for more boardable lot sizes, but still maintaining the same density. So it's easier to purchase a two acre lot than it's a five acre lot. If someone wants to subdivide two acres, but then they're willing to.
We, we could also, that could also be addressed through a.
This map would.
And could be addressed to a multiple, multiple dwelling building, multiple, four units to a building. Wireless, we pretty much eliminated that standard.
Hmm.
Put cell towers on everyone's front yard. And we'll keep the removal of abandoned, if it's not used, take it down.
What page is that?
What number are you talking about?
I'm sorry, um, page, page thirty-one. On wireless.
Yeah, all of that, all of that.
And the only thing that'll be left in there is removal of abandoned antennas and towers.
I do with twenty-nine thirty.
Oh, yeah, right here.
Thirty-three.
Yeah.
Page thirty-four. Section three point one-seven, access roads and permits. Some administrator of the PC shall review the proposed permit or conditional use. When you would change on that, it's what, four hundred feet? For continuous road frontage.
Yeah, although the wording on that is, I'm not entirely here on.
That, that should be, is between four hundred.
Sure, yep.
You need another sentence above, if it's less than four hundred, you need another category.
We have, is between.
Yeah, that's supposed to be between four hundred.
It should be between four hundred and eight, hundred.
Yeah, for less than four hundred.
Yep. Let's just see, if it's less than eight hundred feet.
Yeah, you could do that.
Or you could say, yeah, less than eight hundred feet.
I was trying to say, less than four hundred, you have one access road.
Or it's, it's more than four hundred and less than eight hundred, two access roads are permitted.
Well, we got the between there, so that covers that.
Between, if it's between, it does deal with that.
So if it's less. So, if it's less than four hundred.
You can only have one.
One access, that should be added there.
But you don't need to add, this is just saying you can have two.
If it's less than four hundred.
It's not, hm?
If it's less than four hundred.
Yep, but if-
Did it say that?
Yeah, that reads good, though.
So, if it's- And then between four hundred and eight hundred, you can have-
We've already said you have to have an access road. So, if it's less than four hundred feet, you only get one. If it's between four hundred and eight hundred, you get two.
You may have two.
Yeah. Might be a little nuts, unless you're doing a-
In a washover, yeah.
Residential care programs, did we add in?
Where are you looking?
Uh, I'm sorry, page forty, section three point two-five.
Yeah, this is just making it the same as state statute. So, state statutes changed, it doesn't have this within the thousand.
Okay.
The next change is around page forty-one.
Forty-one, a fee for conditional use.
Page forty-one.
Yep, and a fee for appeal to the zoning administrator. So, a fee for zoning permit, conditional use application, and appeal to the zoning administrator shall be required. That's pretty stated, pretty simple.
Who's going to make the change?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just keeping them all in.
Copies of the permit shall be on file with the zoning administrator. In our particular town, that doesn't apply. And apparently it was tried many times, and we've come across several boxes of cases. Uh, but we're required in our land records. And we have an excellent filing system of all our zoning permits, and that's located in the vault.
The zoning administrator is not a full-time job, and he works out of his house. So, we're not going to ask him to do-
No, no, I don't think it, it matters so much how the records are. I think this is more of the state's saying-
That they be kept.
The zoning administrator shall keep copies, it doesn't specify.
You could say something like, if the town, that they shall be kept by the town. That's vague, too.
Shall be on file. We could even say at the town office. I mean, they're supposed to be public record, right?
Yes.
So-
That's why they're in the vault.
It should be, yeah.
They're filed by name. We're going to change that to filed by address eventually. A warrant, that's smarter.
Mike?
Yeah?
Uh, I don't know if you were onto another page, but we don't want to forget our conversation about, um, the fire department. The planning commission may require documentation from the fire department as to the acquisition.
Yep, I haven't, I haven't got there yet, but yeah. It's, I think we can put that in with the, um, uh- Nope, it's, it's all the stuff, A through twelve. Some stuff we have in the conditional use review. A conditional use approval, I'm sorry. That'll be four fourteen. And I think that'd be a good spot for that. I, I was still on page forty-two. And the planning commission shall submit, instead of the zoning administrator, substitute planning commission shall submit to the flood insurance administrator a biannual report to be sent to the DUC. That's on page forty-two. I think we covered that already, didn't we?
I had it in here.
We did say that, I have it in my notes.
The planning commission or zoning administrator, that's fine, Kyle. That's fine.
Was it okay to weigh what's originally?
Zoning administrator for-
Or planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's what we did.
We did.
And I think on the very next one, the very next one, it would be under section, page forty-two, section four point three. Two-thirds of the way down the page. And the zoning administrator shall submit to the FIA. So, we're just going to add, the zoning administrator or the PC shall submit to the flood FIA.
Is that here?
We, I've done it a couple of times with people down the lake who've done anything. Just sort of followed some-
Yeah. Yeah, I know, but right, it's the section right there.
Yes, yeah.
If you went back to, to four point three, I'm not sure that you are further running down in four three. Right there, that last paragraph, okay. I just wanted to make sure you had them, sorry.
Oh, should I, so, uh, here, though? I, I just added, I don't know if that was weird. Getting added or?
I think we're going to leave it as the last paragraph there.
Got it.
Which would mean we'd have to make a change or something.
Keep it so. We had a small change, uh, page forty-three, section four point seven point one.
Did we fix that other thing?
I believe, Kyle, you put this in where-
We just passed?
Yeah, that's, uh, two, for a period, has been discontinued for a period of two consecutive years, it shall not be reestablished. And this perfect example would be, um, flooded out houses that were on the lake that are non-
Not habitable?
Yeah, they're not occupied.
Should there be some out clause, like, without resubmitting to the planning? Do you hear anything down there?
They have two years, and you can extend that. So, an extension, that might be a good spot to say with the possibility of a two-year extension. Or, uh-
Yeah, the, the thing about non-compliant use, those are generally trying to do away with it over time. So, you know, if it's not compliant use or a non-compliant structure, it doesn't need setbacks. If it's been abandoned for a while, or you're thinking, okay, it's not compliant, you can let it. Yeah. You're trying to make it through this long. Initially, they're just not doing it, but-
For two years. Okay, um, page forty-seven. Section four point one, four point one-nine. The planning commission may require additional documentation or information to, to assist with review and evaluation of a proposal. Similarly, in there, we want to include asking the fire department, especially for a subdivision.
But that, that sentence encompasses that.
It does.
So, we don't need to add the fire department there, because it's up to us to do that? Saying, hey, we need this to, um, specifically, do we really need to add that language there?
Well, I, I'm thinking making the applicant responsible for it, not the, not the PC.
Do that. We will require documentation-
Okay.
From them, and then they go off and do their thing.
Okay.
That would encompass that for me.
Does that sound native?
Sounds all right to me. I mean, I know some of the other towns have actual requirements written down.
Yep.
So, to me, this is a little open-ended. If you're just going to ask for additional documentation, but if you guys actually ask for documentation, given whatever criteria you want to give them, like-
You could even put in this, for example, from the fire department.
If you don't, if you don't mention the fire department at all, it could get skipped over. Nobody may think of it.
Yep.
Well, it's part of that list we have to review things. What was that other list we were talking about earlier?
The ten items.
Yes, that's on there.
Yep, okay.
It's already encompassed it.
As long as it exists somewhere.
Is there any guidance that you're going to give to people seeking permits in terms of levels of service?
That's what we typically do.
So, like, I'm worried, I'll sit and discuss this, tell them what else they need to give to us in the next season.
No, I know, but I mean, in terms of, of, I don't know what you're going to ask them to get from the fire department or something.
We would give them specifically.
Turn around.
So, a couple of ones above that, it does talk about access for fire equipment and onsite pedestrian safety and-
Trying to get-
What for? Two, two?
If the fire department did not-
Oh, it's down below. It's in the review thing down below.
Four fourteen, yeah, just links up there.
Yeah, I guess to reach our other point, so if you're telling them to turn around, for instance, tell them how, I think it is, or give them any criteria, you know, does it make it easy for the permit seeker to know exactly how fast they're going to order?
Tell them, tell them where to go. How many houses there are, where the drugs go through. Trace is what you need for turnaround diameter. All that stuff. We just went through that.
Many of them is site-specific, yeah, we did with the, with the-
The four, uniformized division.
NFPA.
So, we had to do that.
The National Protection Association has, has set that as the max, three hundred feet.
Seeing, so pretty three five, I always got to have specifically.
Cause you have to hammer it in and pull forward.
Possibly, you may have a, for example, the fire department. Recommendation or letters that's lying. Essentially for safety act, is it us to back up?
We had that in our review.
Oh, yes, and it's, it's in four point-
Access for fire.
There you go.
Yeah, there it is.
We come up on page fifty-three, section five point three point one, and this is for a PUD. I think we come up with thirty days. Shall have thirty days to make sure the application is complete.
Thanks, Peter.
Changed it fifteen to thirty?
Yeah.
You want to change from sixteen to fifty?
Shall have thirty days.
Yeah, we did change it to thirty, yep.
You could also use forty-five, but- Our other stuff is fif, is thirty?
I had a different, because I've been keeping. Is that was a late, one of our latest changes, right?
Actually, okay, I mean, you know, do this thirty days, but it's not changing the receipt. I thought you did, I thought you did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought the-
Five, three, seven, seven, five years, so four, is that you?
On page fifty-five, I thought the definitions were excellent.
Yeah.
And thank you, Kyle, for clarifying those.
This page fifty-five. Okay, yeah. Yeah, accessory on farm businesses are a new one. Towns can't prohibit them, but they, they can be regulated, so.
Says nothing about adult entertainments or any of that.
Yeah, seriously. I'm just thinking, if that covers everything, we can go into the timeline.
Deed notice? I, I think, I think we had something, a deed restriction or a deed notice.
Yeah, it's, um-
I don't know if you would add anything, Joe.
I, I added it.
You would add?
Um, right here.
Yep, so you've got-
Something that I missed.
Could you go back to that, this one? You're talking about development in flood zones. Just had it up there. Definition of. To buildings or structures, mining, dredging, filling, green, pavement, that means nothing can be done, basically.
It, well, that's just for development. Yeah, so, so development is, is, everything under the science actually for flood hazard regulations.
Right.
That's the definition.
Okay.
You can get a permit for development. New structures, new principal structures are created. In, in the flood hazard area.
Okay, that's not a, that doesn't apply to flood hazard areas that are not being scheduled for development. If you just have an area you're out there and you wanna regrade it to improve drainage.
You would, you'd get a permit.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so essentially, like, the good rule of pretty much everything that wasn't required. Except for the very specific exceptions that, that we, we looked at earlier.
Holy grace. Rush up.
Yeah, it's longer than me. Yeah, this general means the structure, you know, you're not changing the whole area of the structure in any way. You're putting on siding or, you know, painting, things like that.
I'm just thinking, as a result of all of this flooding, I think we have a better understanding of how water moves over these areas. So if the landowner were to condition, say, to facilitate drainage away from a house, does that fit in? That just requires a permit, so just.
It still needs a permit and that would go to the state and our votes because it probably involve a local waterway and require stream filtration permit along the local.
Right.
So it gets complicated.
Yeah, you create a thing that let the stuff rush through your own property, so it won't go to your house, but your neighbor might have a problem.
Actually, there was a particular case with Sue Bassett, divided her property, Lee Kehoe, who lives right next door. The driveway was smoked so that some of the water was going onto his property. So he repitched the driveway, put a drainage ditch and covered it. And no water so far has gone to its lease back end.
But you're saying that that needs a permit to do that?
It was part of the subdivision permit.
And I think the last.
Page sixty-five. Substantial improvement, which we defined earlier, is that the same?
Yeah, we just added that over three years or over the period of economic and development.
Uh, it's the same as what we have put in our standard.
Yeah, that I've, I've added is over three years or over the period of economic and development. That's new, but, and that's just, that's to kind of get around the loophole where if you're in a flood zone, you can't just incrementally expand your structure to double or triple its value over time and not bring it up to, to the regular presentation.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any?
I was just gonna run through, because I know there's, have a timeline if you're looking at for, you know, getting this through the process. Gonna go through essentially what that looks like. I spoke with Elaine and it sounds like you're looking at maybe go to planning commission hearing in the next couple of months.
So that was tonight was the planning commission hearing.
Oh.
We have a guest. Who's, who's the favorite of that one?
Was it warned that way?
We said a few steps along the way, but.
Yeah.
That's a good step to skip.
Yeah, so there is a fifteen day warning that comes about prior to the hearing. So you kinda want to have all your, your dust in the rep, in advance.
I have a question with the hearing. What is the hearing for? Every single one of the changes, do we have to go through and read every change?
No, generally, it's, you, the hearing is so that you can hear from the public. And you learn it regarding the changes. So you put the changes up on the, let's say, you have the bill with town clerk's office. You may get known that this is what we're proposing, this is the date, time, place of the hearing. Come to the hearing, we'll have a discussion, talk the stuff that your concerns are. But yeah, you're not gonna do it line by line, because it's probably gonna put people to sleep. But, you know, folks generally will show up or might show up and they might say, well, I think on page thirty-five, and that's when you go to page thirty-five and you look at what they're.
And you'll be here.
So we.
You'll be here too, right?
Probably yes. It will, if it's on Zoom, that would be a little better, that I'd be happy to answer your questions around the flood stuff. But yeah, all of the other, I guess, I haven't. But yeah, the idea is, so essentially, hear from the public, hear what concerns are. And if you think that there will be a lot of questions about the flood hazard changes, I'd be happy to be at the hearing. Generally, that's, I've not, I'm not, it takes not many people to show up to hearings and talk about flood regulations.
Does that mind, does that be different now?
Given the past year. So do we put it up with all the track changes? So do they see where, I mean, you might clean that up a little bit, but, but should we put it up that way? Or do we put it up with a summary of the major differences between this one and the other one?
What about just putting it up?
Let the people figure it out.
Just, just put it up as we want it, without having anything in red or bright blue or anything, just print it all out. This includes changes.
The issue with that is it's so, so here's, so far it's very narrow. And if you put the whole thing up, someone might talk about something that, that you haven't been working on.
That we've already approved.
And, and they might say, I don't like that, it's like, well, we haven't touched that, that's the same.
Yeah.
And so it can help to clarify, especially if you have the changes showing and someone's talked about something else. And you can say, well, actually, that's not something that we're looking at this go-around. We're really focused on these other areas that are highlighted in blue or.
Okay, and your first question is gonna be, what did you change?
And, and then, yeah, then it's a headache to try and.
A bigger shed.
So highlighting them in some color rather than having all the little track changes hanging out on the right, I mean, I don't know.
All the way down the right, the comments are gonna be removed.
The middle one.
Right.
So would you show what it was and what we're changing it to, or just what you've changed it to?
I generally just show the track changes version, because that shows what's been crossed out and what's been added.
Yeah, just like that.
Just like that.
Without the comments.
Without the comments about who made it, when I talk about track changes, it usually shows all of the right.
Municipalities around us this document.
Yes.
And that would be the same document that we were posting on the website and putting copies of every public places. So I send them that this change document.
Do you, so you would want to, before you, you're ready to go to hearing, you might say, this is the document you wanna go to hearing with. And that's the document that you then send to.
Municipalities.
Municipalities in the state.
So they was, with those, the same changes that would be shown in public, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's send them, send the other municipalities same shit we send the townspeople.
Crosshaps additions and other where there's changes, but not a whole lot of commentary on the right.
Yeah, you're gonna wanna clean it up and then your comments will be removed. And yeah, it goes to neighboring towns, but you can, you can email the towns the document.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It says a video.
You can, you can request a return receipt in.
And email it?
Yeah.
So we don't have to mail them out?
No, no, generally, what, what I do if I'm mailing is I'll send it out. And because bylaws are two weeks, it's fifteen days between when you can have your hearing and when the mailing has to go out. If I don't hear back from a town in a week, I send a follow-up email and say, hey, I sent this to you on this date. Can you confirm that you received it? And then I just keep a record of, of those, that email correspondence. And then, no changes to the document can be made in between when the mailing goes out and the hearing. So once you've done the mailing, you've sent out the hearing notice to the newspaper, don't touch the document. You can make as many changes as you want to after the hearing. You can rewrite the whole thing. But yeah, you can't, can't change it during, prior to, within that window. And there is a document that needs to go, that needs to be mailed out to two towns as well. It's a planning commission reporting form. And I can, I can provide, I can send you a copy. It's just writing out, it's a state form, and it's saying, does it change X, Y, and Z? And just coming out like summarizing the changes. And I can, I can help you with that, especially on the flood hazard. So I don't know so much about the other changes, but yeah, you can work with you to help to get that written out. So yeah, when you do the mailing, it includes hearing notice that by law and planning commission reporting form.
When you say I do the mailing, that includes when I mail to these surrounding towns? TROC gets it and DHCD?
And DHCD.
That, that was my question for that.
Yeah, that's just online, and they have an online reporting form.
Okay.
So it's just a PDF essentially.
And then after the first hearing, we have to wait thirty days on.
Fifteen, I think, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen days before the select board hearing.
Yeah, assuming, you know, you've got all your changes, you, so you can hold a meeting on the same day as the hearing. And then after the hearing, you can talk about, have a hearing led, you can make changes if you want to make any in the meeting. Or you can decide to send the draft over to the select board on the same day. You just have to do it during a meeting. And since they're two different things, you need to have both the hearing schedule and the meeting schedule. So.
So I'm still sending the draft that we're sending to the select board, they're getting the draft that shows changes also. So after the select board's hearing, and if they approve it, then I come back and remove all the underlines and, and food and stuff like that.
Yes, yeah. Yes, so. And, you know, you could even give two drafts, like the one with the track changes and one clean copy.
Okay.
For comparison. But yeah, afterwards, you'll clean it up, make sure all the track changes are out, add the adoption date. If, if it's adopted by the select board in a meeting, if it's used to adopt it, then it's effective twenty-one days after adoption.
Can they do, they can do the same thing we can do, in other words, have a hearing and then have meet and adopt. So would be good for them to have both a clean copy and a.
A marked up copy.
Yeah, but.
And then it's the same situation. No changes to the draft can be made when the select board hearing is, is born. And the select board, if they want to make any changes, they should do it prior to their, their hearing. Because if, if there's a substantial change following the hearing, it triggers a new hearing. So just wanna make sure it's pretty much good to go prior to the hearing.
We hear it, we approve it, we send it to the select board, and then they can fuss around with it if they want, and then announce a hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, but they don't wanna make any, they want to avoid making changes after the hearing, if at all possible. Whereas the planning commission can make all the changes it wants to following the hearing, the planning commission hearing.
Is there a timeline between the planning commission hearing and the select board hearing? Does that have to happen within like thirty days or anything like that?
A year.
Oh.
So you've, you've got, yeah, a lot. Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Can we schedule the, the PC hearing for our next month? Is that good for everybody? I, I would like to have done it today.
Jay brought in four applications, three of them with N B, Shoreland O'Leary.
PUD, yeah.
So we're going to have to hear him.
Yep.
Possibly in February, can we do that at that meeting?
Yes.
Have a public hearing also?
Yep.
Wow, we'll be here all night.
No, I'll get, I'll get home.
Just go fast, though. Start at six.
You can schedule a second, the second planning commission.
Yep.
Meeting day per p.m. and have the hearing on that day. So you have a hearing followed and then a live meeting.
We can also push Jay off to March, too.
We probably can, because this is all stuff that's gotta happen to us anyway. Maybe that's what we should do.
Although we may need to know, is it stuff he needs to hire somebody to do?
No, no, they're all cabins and.
They do it themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, he just got an early start on things.
Kyle, you have saved everything, right? So there's an email that needs.
You can review it, make sure.
Is Feb- is February good for everybody?
February sixth.
I'm gonna go to Maine, but I'll go after this. I'll go after this. Either Maine or Wisconsin, we're gonna chase snow. Either Maine or, or Wisconsin, we're gonna chase snow.
Good luck. Supposed, how about Western Pennsylvania next week?
Is that, is that good, Lane? Is that gonna give us enough time to?
Hire either, but I have a friend who's.
The only, the only two individuals that I'd like to send to it is our zoning administrator, for his input, and our previous zoning commissioner, Jeff Person. And I should ask everybody if that's okay with them, if we send a copy to Jim Allen and Tom Ellis?
To what end?
For their input.
You will have to put together a, a reporting form.
Yep.
So that'll be, you'll probably all want to, like, five, four, or just have a look at before it goes out to the towns. And it's essentially just a summary of the changes.
How would you summarize these changes?
Yeah, exactly.
I know.
Do you have to list them all?
No, no, you're not listing them all, you're just, it's like.
What about just a blank statement, we made changes? See the text.
What, what were your concerns?
I was just saying, in order to comply with the state regulations.
Parts of the bylaw.
And I think just in order to comply with the state regulations, we made changes to the.
Section four point three.
You can find the draft.
Just the basis for the changes.
Draft would be on the website.
Yeah, but I mean, like, what's for the, the bylaw revision? Because they're very focused changes.
Well, that could be my source of mistake. Oh, what's for it?
Yeah, just a little state.
Yeah, updating, updating our zoning ordinance so it meets our town plan.
There's like the pearls, right there.
And also changes in state regulations.
Yeah.
So that, that comp took up this, this kind of that broad brush, like, this is why we're doing it. A couple, and then you mentioned a few of the major changes, you say, one of them is.
The shed, the shed, people are gonna love the shed, no permit.
And get rid of the cell tower.
You're going to shorten the distance for the Shorlan overlay, so that's going to require fewer conditional use applications. It went from a thousand feet to two fifty, right?
Yep. Elimination of the stringent requirements for cellphone tower. Uh, the adaptation of incorporating our River Corner Protection Act with our, with our flood, flood mapping. I'll think of some great bullshit.
The sixth.
The sixth, okay. So that, that gives just over a month.
To be in accordance with the current FEMA.
January twentieth, I'd say is the latest that it could be allowed. The hearing notice and the mailing is Saturday, so I'd say maybe the Friday.
Or Thursday, Saturday, Wednesday.
Nailing seem to get people's attention.
There's probably five items in there that would.
Yeah, you want the hearing.
Be ours, too, you'll get some of the same concern.
Fifteen days of one hearing.
Yeah. And it needs to have the date, time.
Brush hog.
Location of the hearing.
Regrading, all that sand.
And yeah, I can.
It's all maintenance. I'll tell you that. It was an issue with my neighbor, too.
So then it's just. Seven o'clock, September fifteenth.
And it needs to go into the newspaper by seventeen, so I have to actually have it read by January tenth. They print on Wednesdays.
Oh, okay, so we need to go in by the tenth. The, the notice is not a big, it's not a big one, it's pretty easy to put together. And then, are there any map changes?
None. Aside from the property lines.
Okay. But like, the map boundaries.
None whatsoever. Yep.
And then. Okay.
That would probably be a useful thing to say.
Yes, yeah.
Notice that the zoning districts have not changed.
It's a red flag.
Because that's the sort of thing that would get everybody angry to make sure they're not gonna be, have their whole thing messed up. So we say that's not changed.
Same, it's not changed, probably is the same.
Do it quick, get it over with.
Twenty-five day zoning.
Probably more people would like that.
Tear it down.
And then, the mailing, the reporting form, ready by the seventeenth as well. And the bylaw will be cleaned up by the seventeenth to meet that. So it's all we have in agenda.
Thank you for coming in, thank you for your input. I just want to get this.
Don't want to make anybody mad.
It's less than a unit word.
Oh, yes.
Put your gavel down to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.